We'll call to order the Shawnee Board of City Commissioners meeting, October 3rd, 2011. Call roll please.
Stevens, Sims, Harrod.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Collier.
Here.
Winteringer.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
We have a question.
Thank you. The invocation tonight will be given by Reverend Mike Taylor from New Beginnings Church, followed by the flag salute. All who wish to, please rise.
Father, as we gather in this place tonight, we pray your blessings upon the city of Shawnee and upon this meeting of the city commission. Father, I thank you for the men and women who are involved in the administration of the city. I thank you for their willingness to invest their time and energy and effort in doing what you told your people to do in Babylon, and that is to work for the good of the city. Father, I pray that their motives tonight, as they conduct the business of the city, will be pure and unselfish. Father, I pray that together they will work for the common good of the citizens of Shawnee. Father, I know that sometimes the decisions that they are called upon to make are difficult, and sometimes those decisions can be contentious. And so, Lord, I pray that you will give to each one of them that measure of wisdom that they need to know and to do what is right. Father, I'm grateful that you love every one of us. You've told us that in your word. And Father, you've told us that you are interested in and take note of every aspect and every circumstance of our lives. And so, I know that tonight you are interested in this meeting and that you look in upon it. And I pray, Lord, that everything that is done here tonight will please you. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Taylor. Item number one is consider approval of agenda.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item two, consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Winteringer.
Comment.
Okay.
I'd sure appreciate that whoever did the effort on the tax commission deal, it gave all the explanation. That hit the spot.
It was wonderful. Yeah. Call roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number three, citizen participation. We'll move to item four, mayor's proclamation, fire prevention week, October 10th through the 14th, 2011. I'll do this one.
Is the chief gonna accept that? I don't see him in his bathing suit. I have bathing suit and T-shirt.
Last time he saw you, you were in a dunk tank. All for a good cause though, right?
Yes.
That's right. Okay, a city of Shawnee proclamation, fire prevention week. Whereas the city of Shawnee is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. Home fires killed more than 2,500 people in the United States in 2009, according to the latest research from the nonprofit National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to more than 360,000 home fires. And whereas, cooking equipment is the leading cause of home structure fires and associated industries injuries, and the third leading cause of home fire deaths. Heating and electrical equipment and smoking materials are among the leading causes of all reported home fires. The risk of dying in a home structure fire caused by smoking material rises with age. Of the person or the home. Home candle fires are reported to a U.S. fire department every 30 minutes on average. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported homes fires in half, and automatic fire sprinkler systems cut the risk of dying in a home fire by about 80%. And whereas, Shawnee's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, Shawnee residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, residents who are planned and practice a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, the 2011 Fire Prevention Week theme, it's Fire Prevention Week, Protect Your Family From Fire, effectively serves to remind us all of the simple actions we can take to stay safer during, stay safer from fire during Fire Prevention Week and year around. Now therefore, I Linda Peterson, Mayor of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, by the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim October 10th through the 14th, 2011, as Fire Prevention Week, dated this third day of October, 2011, in the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma. Wow. Yeah. You guys tell us about, stop dropping. Okay.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Just wanted to mention, you should have all gotten an email, hopefully you did, with the schedule for the, our clown troops that'll be out in the community next week. We'll see about 3,000 of our area children next week, and we always look forward to that. I want to pause just a moment to thank all of those members of our department that worked so hard with that. They all volunteer, different ones come through the years. Jim Ogle especially has spearheaded that for years, and I just appreciate his commitment to that so very much. That's something that they want to do. You don't have to ask them when they're ready to go every year for that. They've been working out. I've heard music in the last week or so in the day room, and they're working on their props, and I think they're, they're pretty close to ready to go. So if you get a chance, if you haven't already seen one of their skits, we want to invite you to, to come out. Or if you have, we'd love to have you back again. You've got the school schedule also, something they started doing a few years ago, it's working out well as a community performance. It'll be next Thursday night, I believe it's 6:30, I believe. Can't remember the time on that, at the expo center. That was to fill what we felt was a void with some of the, maybe the homeschool children and some of the private schools that we can't, can't get to all of those. So we've opened that up the last few years, and it's worked out really well. Local 206 provides refreshments along with a lot of the wives making extra cookies and brownies and things like that. So it's a good time. So if you get a chance to come out to the expo next Thursday night for that also. But we do appreciate the city's support in this as always. Thank you.
Thank you Chief. Item number five, city manager's presentation of employee of the month to Christina Oldham, police department dispatcher.
Just a few things about Christina, even though you and I have not met yet. Christina's raised in Shawnee. She's been dispatching since the age of 19 and throughout college. She graduated from OSU in May 2010. She's been dispatching for Shawnee PD for two years and is assigned to the evening shift and dispatched for police, fire, and medical personnel. She's been an exemplary employee. She takes on any job that is asked of her and is always polite and courteous to the personnel she dispatches. She willingly covers extra shifts when asked and continues to show initiative in her duties. This has caused for much admiration from her coworkers and superiors. Christina, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's crazy. Item number six, consider a resolution of support to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation regarding the maintenance and reopening of rail service between Shawnee, Oklahoma and McAllister, Oklahoma.
It's just what you said, a resolution to the city of Shawnee in support of the protection and maintenance of existing rail lines and the reopening of the rail line between Shawnee, Oklahoma and McAllister, Oklahoma.
Anybody? Any questions?
I'll make the motion, but I, I mean, I do it just for the businesses that need it in Shawnee. I don't, but I mean, I hate to support anything with people that are always trying to conflict or try to interfere with the business of Shawnee, but I would make the motion just because of business in Shawnee that doesn't need it.
True. It is definitely supported by the businesses in Shawnee.
Well, that's what I say, but I, I'm not happy about the other part of it, but I know the businesses and it'll help the business economy of Shawnee, so therefore I make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay.
Thank you Billy.
Motion by Commissioner Harrod and a second by Vice Mayor Collier. Any questions or anything about it? Very good. Call roll then please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Number seven, consider a resolution accepting the grant agreement for Airport Improvement Program, AIP, project number 3-40-0088-015-2011. Dunst number 09-160-2441 from the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, at Shawnee Regional Airport to make airside improvements for the project, rehabilitate runway 17 slash 35, Phase II construction, and improve runway 17 slash 35 safety area, Phase II construction.
I thought you were gonna get by, I didn't see you moving up there.
Yeah.
You had plenty of time.
I gave him plenty of time.
My Dunst number on this resolution does not match the item. Is that significant?
It does not match the item.
We have 09-160-2441.
My Dunst number is 126176853. I don't, I, I'm not concerned about it from a point of view of the agenda matching the resolution, but I want the minutes to match the proper number. Do you know which one's correct?
I believe it's, it's not the one that's in the agenda.
Okay. The, the proper number then, for the purposes of the record, would be Dunst number 126176853. Otherwise, it's identical to what has been read by the mayor.
And it's standard resolution. We need to do this so we can award the bid a little later.
Okay. All right.
So moved.
All right. And a motion to approve the resolution by Commissioner Winteringer.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier. Anything else? Step one or step three really for us?
Who has the authority to sign a change order? Does the city manager?
City manager does, yes.
I do.
We won't have that till next week, or next meeting, so.
I just wanna, I mean, it's no big deal.
Do you need to read the resolution again?
I don't think so. You read it, that time it was word for word.
Okay. All right. Call roll please.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number eight, consider a resolution authorizing execution of right-of-way public utility and encroachment agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, ODOT, for their high, state highway 102 roadway improvement project, project number SSP-163C165SS.
And again, that's exactly the title.
Okay.
So moved.
All right. So a motion to approve the resolution by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier, with no other corrections. Call roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item nine, consider a resolution declaring certain items of city property surplus and donating said items to South Central Industries as recommended by the Airport Advisory Board.
This is a resolution declaring certain items of personal property surplus and no longer needed for city purposes, describing said items and authorizing the donation of said items to the South Central Industries.
Move to approve.
All right. Motion to approve by Vice Mayor Collier, second by Commissioner Winteringer. Pretty straightforward. Call roll please.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 10, consider bids. A, tapping machine valve insertion equipment.
This was quick and easy. We didn't get any bids, so I'm gonna have to rattle some, I'm gonna have to rattle some cages and see why, 'cause, I mean, we had one demonstrated, and I've answered some calls. I don't know why we didn't get a bid, but I'll find out.
I don't.
Some more punt, I guess.
Okay.
I was looking forward to that piece of equipment.
You got it. So was everybody else. Okay. Um, so you'll bring a recommendation to us later if you need to rebid or, okay. 10B, refurbished screw pumps, contract number COS-SMA-12-01.
Staff recommends awarding it to J.S. Herring Company of Athens, Tennessee, in the amount of $171,700. Budgeted amount was $200,000.
They come down and take it out and refurbish it or bring it back, or do you have to take it out?
No, they'll do it on site.
Do what?
They'll do it on site.
Oh, okay. All right. So moved.
All right. A motion to approve staff's recommendation by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Collier. Any other questions? Call roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 10C, Lake Road Bridge Rehabilitation Project, contract number COS-PW-11-03, deferred from the 9/19/11 meeting.
This item is for Lake Road Bridge Rehab Project. We had opened up bids before and, and totaled them, and the low bid was from PBX Corporation out of Sand Springs, I believe, in an amount of 600, 630,316.30. That was a little more than the engineer's estimate and a little more than what we budgeted. So we asked him to go back and take a look at some items that they could maybe delete from the actual scope of the work, and they came back and there's a letter in your packet from Guy Engineering, our bridge consultant, identifying some items that they could remove, which lowers the cost by about $73,516. We went ahead and applied all those items that they were recommending to remove across the board to all of the bidders, and the same low bid was the low bid. PBX is still the low bid. With that, we would recommend to award the project to PBX Corporation in the amount of 630,316.30, and then at the next commission meeting, we'll come back with a change order and change order down. I've talked with Logan Huspeth, he's with PBX, and they're aware of it. They agree with the cost and everything. They wanted to look at the, the items that we were removing to make sure they didn't, you know, have some money, other, for other items in there, and they, they're okay with it. So we would make that recommendation.
Okay. Very good.
So moved.
All right. A motion to approve your recommendation by Commissioner Winteringer.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier. Call roll please.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Item 10D, rehabilitate runway 17-35, grade safety and construction connecting taxway, AIP project 3-40-0088-015-2011, contract number COS-PW-11-01, deferred from 9/19/11 meeting, and many more before that.
Here we are. I added to your packets on your desk there, the letter from our engineer and also the bid tabs I neglected to put in the agenda packet. I apologize for that. Our recommendation is to award the base bid and the alternate bid in the amount, total amount of $3,605,177. And we too will be coming back with a change order at the next commission meeting, reducing it to the available funding of $3,526,982. Everything's in place and we're ready to go.
Okay.
I move we approve the contract.
Okay. A motion to approve by Commissioner Harrod.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier. Any questions? Call roll please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 11, new business.
Madam Mayor, no, no new business this evening.
All right. Item 12, administrative reports.
Two this evening. Justin's gonna come talk to us about the Christmas parade.
I thought you were gonna talk about Halloween or something.
No, nothing. Catalina's last, last meeting. But I did want to talk and update the commissioners a bit about the downtown Shawnee, nighttime Christmas parade. I think there's been some concern expressed to me from the community that that parade might be canceled this year. I want to correct that and just let you know that the Christmas will continue and the parade will continue as well. Of course, downtown Shawnee, as an organization, is no longer in existence. However, a dedicated group of volunteers, along with some assistance from the city, is going to keep the tradition continuing. So this year's parade, as in years past, will be at 6:30 PM on the first Thursday, December 1st. And the theme this year is a storybook Christmas. Entry forms will be available online and at the planning department office starting this Friday, and entry forms are due November 15th. And so we look forward to this year's event, and happy to answer any questions that you have.
What was that date again?
December 1st.
Are you chairing that committee?
You could say that. I wouldn't, but you could say.
Well, thank you very much.
All right.
This is, this is important. All right. Any other administrative reports?
Madam Mayor, one, a deuce love report. Jim Beard's gonna talk about West Watkins and Shawnee Twin Lakes.
For about a little over a week, we've been blending Twin Lakes and West Watkins, and very successfully, the numbers are really good, and it looks good, it's working. And part that makes it easier is we've got two 30-inch lines going to the plant, so we've got Twin Lakes water in one line, West Watkins in the other. So we keep fresh water in both lines, and then we can do the blending at the plant rather than do something and then go out to the lake or Coker Road or somewhere. But we've been doing it for about a week, and the numbers are good, and that puts the impact, spreads it out over both lakes. Like right now, our, our demand is around four to 4.5 million gallons a day, so we're most of the time running like 2.3 million gallons a day out of each lake, so. And as we go into winter, which is, the demand will go down, we'll be probably drawing 1.5, something like that, out of each lake. So that's just a really good thing. We've been looking forward to trying that for quite some time, and we finally got all of our ducks in a row where we could give it a shot, and it's working, so.
Very good.
It's just, I just want to let you know that, that puts kind of a whole new spin on our water supply and how we can use it differently. There's all different kinds of scenarios we can use it, but it's a good thing.
Especially going into the master plan for supply and distribution too, that would really help. That makes that easier, I'm sure, to evaluate.
What's your estimate on the, you know, down 10%, 20% or at the lakes, or do you have any idea of what?
Well, the Twin Lakes are down six, I think it's 6.3 feet, but they're at normal pool, and everybody thinks, I know, when the fishing things get out of the water, that it's a disaster, but we're at normal pool, normal pool right now, and going through all that 100-degree weather and record drought and all that, to just now be coming down to normal pool is a very good thing. Normal pool is 1067. That's where the lake, I know everybody thinks normal's full, but full is one of those thank you Jesus things. It's not, it's not normal. So normal is 1067. That's where it's meant to operate. And then the range above that is just gravy. So right now, going through all that, we're at 1067, which is normal. So that's a, that's a really good thing. West Watkins is down about 5.3 feet, and there's still another 7.5 feet before the recreational pool or anything. So really, considering what we've been through, both lakes are in pretty good shape.
That's good information. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to make sure the commissioners knew that the blending was occurring. I know for many, many years, you know, we either couldn't use West Watkins or, you know, we don't use it certain times of the year. This is, this is what we've been looking to do for many, many years, and the investments that went on, of course, before me certainly, are really working out. It's, it's important that we, we are at that point, that we can manage it, and I wanted to make sure that the commissioners and the citizens knew that.
Thank you. Very good.
That's all, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Item number 13, commissioners' comments.
I've got about two hours, if that's all right.
No.
I do have two or three things.
Okay.
Brian, we've talked about the yield study, and I've kind of thought of that on the way down here this afternoon. We, any, do we have any progress?
We have a final meeting coming up here, first part of November, to, to talk about it with the engineering firm, and then shortly thereafter, we'll bring up the commission.
Got to ask about the hotel motel tax, and I just kind of glanced through here. I noticed one of them hadn't paid since December of, in the calendar year 2010. I mean, what, what can we do, or is there anything we can do, or?
Commissioners, last year was the first year that we ever audited any of our hotels. I made the decision to go ahead and retain Crawford and Associates to go out and do that. They did three hotels last year and three hotels this year. We had some issues with the Cinderella.
We had four this year.
Four this year. Well, you tell us.
Oh.
Well, I think, I think more than anything, the overarching goal that I wanted to do was, was we have the dollars that are left after we give the CBB the hotel motel head in bed tax. Those dollars are supposed to be used for those audits. Our hotels, with the exception of one, are doing a very, very good job. In fact, they want the results of the audit so they can send them back to their corporate offices and say, "We're doing a good job." We do have a problem child in town, and we, we audited his books last year and this year again because of that very reason. And I'll turn over the results of that to Cindy if she wants to talk about it.
Well, the one hotel has not paid, the last time we received payment for them was, I think it was May of last year, and.
Of 2010, I'm just saying.
I'm sorry.
May of 2010.
Yes. And the other four hotels are, as Brian said, they're doing great. We collected actually, we gave $387,000 to the chamber, and we collect, we keep 1%, which pays enough for the audits, which is, our collection was about $3,900 last year.
Okay.
I, I would prefer we not go too far into the, the nonpayer.[1670.47] We have, we have a mechanism in our ordinances to charge people in municipal court $500 for failure to file.
Okay.
And failures to remit, and if, in any collections we do ourselves, we don't have to pay the tax commission, they're cut, and in fact, can collect back from them what we spent, we can add that on. So we're looking at, we're starting to look, they're still working on their computer system, but we're going to start looking at doing that, I think you should expect that shortly you'll be hearing from us, asking your permission to begin enforcement.
Let me ask another question, now that deal we passed tonight, on the ordinance we passed tonight, does that, are we going to be able to get a list of everyone inside the city limits to Shawnee that have tax permits or whatever?
We will be able to get, yes, and we'll be able to get the list on failures to file, and those will still be confidential until enforcement begins, and once enforcement begins, they will be public record.
Next question is on the, I've heard some mentioning, Brian, you've brought this up before, about a business license or business permit or something like that, of course, I'm not going to be at the next meeting, but the November meeting, I'd like some information about that, I don't want it to be detrimental to the business, or it'd be too, you know, so expensive to have one, they couldn't afford to buy them, but I'm just wondering if there's some businesses around that don't have, that should have sales tax permits that don't have sales tax permits. I'd say your larger business, I'm sure they do have, because they probably get audited, but there's not a, I mean...
It's not very common in Oklahoma to have that, however, often calls come to my office where a citizen visits a business in town and they're either ripped off, or they have a bad experience, or something along those lines, that we have absolutely no, no way to manage. The best we can tell them is to call the Better Business Bureau or something along those lines. I never would want to have it be onerous on any, any business that would want to start one, no matter how small or how large it is in Shawnee. However, there is an advantage to, I think from our point of view, be able to get into a business, make sure that it's safe for the patrons that are there, make sure it's safe for the employees, particularly from a fire standpoint, you know, that exit signs are working and those types of things. I know we do that initially when somebody moves into a space, but there are some other advantages, and I think we as a staff would welcome the opportunity to talk with the commission about some ways that some other cities in Oklahoma have handled that.
I, I mean, that's what I guess I want to do, is request that information, I'm not sure we're going to take any action on it or not, but I'd like to, maybe that November board, I mean, the tax commission in November, whatever it is, 34th, February.
What's the timeline on getting something back from the tax commission, saying that, is there any timeline on getting that stuff back?
On the...
Who has a permit to do sales tax?
We can go online and start making our requests.
Oh, you have to go over...
Assuming that it's working this week. It's had a lot of bugs, but I have located a woman in another town who's been successful at working the computers, so I'll put her in touch with our folks if we can get it done, so.
Well, I don't know if that's a, you know, a big problem or not, but I know that, and I've talked to senior about it, that I'm wondering about some businesses that maybe are, you know, just popping up overnight, and if they do have the tax permit and so forth, because like I was telling, also the construction companies and everybody else, or home builders and everything, most of them pay taxes when they buy the materials, so that's, I don't know whether that'd still be required to have a business permit or whatever, but one question you might think about asking on it, you know, if we decide to do that, is if they do have a sales, you know, permit, and if they don't, you know, why not, and so forth.
Right.
That's my two hours.
That's it?
Okay. Thanks for being brief, we appreciate it.
Anyone else?
I visited Cole's Department Store, it's very nice, they did a great job, and I would like to welcome them to Shawnee.
We did that last week at 6:45 in the morning.
I was sleeping, I was sleeping.
I was too, yeah.
I thought for one second to get up, but didn't make it, but I'm glad you're over there.
Yep. Anything else? Just real briefly, on behalf certainly of this board and the citizens of Shawnee, I want to offer the condolences to the families of Mike Roberts and Tim Lowey.
Both, both Mike Roberts and his now widow are former employees of the Municipal Court Clerk's Office, and that, we're going to have some scheduled disruptions the next two or three days with court and people being out, but they've also received a lot of supportive calls today, which they've appreciated.
Thank you. Okay, item 14.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Winter Ringer, seconded by...
Steve will say it.
Second.
Commissioner Smith, that's what I heard. Call roll, please.
Winter Ringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Herod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, New Business.
Madam Mayor, no new business or administrative reports this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Commissioner Herod, seconded by Commissioner Winter Ringer. Call roll, please.
Herod.
Aye.
Winter Ringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Winter Ringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, New Business.
Madam Mayor, no new business or administrative reports this evening.
Item number four.
Moved to adjourn.
Motion, adjourned by Vice Mayor Collier, seconded by Commissioner Winter Ringer. Call roll, please.
Collier.
Aye.
Winter Ringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, New Business.
Madam Mayor, no new business or administrative reports this evening.
Item number four.
Moved to adjourn.
Motion, adjourned by Vice Mayor Collier, seconded by Commissioner Winter Ringer. Call roll, please.
Collier.
Aye.
Winter Ringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Well, called to order the Shawnee Airport Authority Meeting, October 3rd, 2011, we